Hello and welcome to American Motherhood, the podcast where we explore how society and politics shaped motherhood in America. Today, we're continuing our local election series with Daniela Beckett, candidate for Westerville City Council. Daniela is a mom, a wife, and director of operations for a local business. She's running on a people-first approach with a focus on safe neighborhoods and affordability. Her American story begins with an immigration journey from Colombia, and you'll hear why she and her husband chose Westerville to raise their family. While this is an election interview, it's also two moms of young children on opposite sides of the political spectrum, sharing a conversation about what matters most in our community. This episode brings us back to the heart of the American Motherhood podcast. My goal with this series is to make local elections more accessible to you, the voters. Whether you're curious about local government, passionate about schools and public safety, or simply want to get to know our candidates, this is a chance to hear their visions in their own words. Please share the series with a friend, leave a review, and subscribe on your favorite podcast app. You could also join the conversation anytime by emailing me at AmericanMotherhood@gmail.com. Okay, let's dive in. Well, Daniela, thank you so much for being here. I appreciate your time. To start, can you please tell us about yourself?
Of course. Thank you so much for having me. I have listened to a podcast a little bit, and I'm excited for like what you're doing. My name is Daniela. I come from Colombia. That's the reason I have a little bit of an accent. I moved to the States, I'm going to say eight years ago, like fully did the transition eight years ago. And I've been here in Columbus for those eight years and in Westerville for four. So I grew up, was raised, born, raised in Colombia, in Bogota, Colombia. That's the capital. And now I have two little kids. I have a five-year-old and a four-year-old. I'm the director of operations for a small business here in Columbus. I oversee everything for the business and we have three locations. And that's pretty much like a little background about me.
Okay, so tell us, why Westerville? Why Ohio to start?
That's a good question. It's like, why Ohio? My husband is from here, so he was, um, he was born and raised in Dublin, Ohio. So when we met in California, when he proposed, he was like, where do you want to live? And as much as I love California, I was like, oh, too expensive.
Sure.
So I was like, maybe not California. And then I was like, well, we could go to Colombia, but what am I going to with him in Colombia? So ultimated was like the decision of being close to family because all my family was back home. So I was like, let's just go where you're from, have your family close by, start this journey of marriage and transitioning where we have people that can support us. So we came here and for the first few years, we were between Dublin and Albany. And then when I was pregnant with my second child, so my daughter, we're like, okay, we need to buy a house, time to buy a house, where should we buy? And we started looking at different areas in the city. And Westerville was the one that was, you know, it's like in between like Dublin, Albany, where we have been living. It has so many parks and recre- like parks, it's a great place to raise a family. And ultimately, it was also the part of like, it was 2021. The market was crazy. Finding a house was crazy. And we saw this house that it was a mess. It was, it was like crazy. It was like the first time in my life that I was so happy to be wearing a mask because the smell was terrible. I was like, oh, my gosh. But I fall in love with the house. For some reason, I was like, that's the house. So that's what brought us to Westerville. So it was, it was kind of like a mix of, we, uh, our church is here, so we wanted to be close to church. It was great central location, a great place to raise a family. And then the house that we end up liking was here. So that's how it happened.
Right. Yeah, I hear that. We also bought in 2021. And so you can try to control where you're gonna end up, but you really have to be a little open-minded.
Yeah, it was a little bit of an open-minded. Thankfully, we were able to get the house in the area that we were looking for. So.
Yeah, good, good. That's awesome. Okay, so what inspired you to run for city council and why is now the right time?
So growing up in Colombia, government, politics has always been my passion. That's what I always wanted to be. But, um, the climate in Colombia with the political climate in Colombia is extremely tense, is hard. So when I told my parents, like, okay, I got accepted into like the best college to go for political science. They were like, yeah, you're not doing that because you are going to end up killed. So you cannot. So that, but like my passion for government, for politics has always been in me. But it was like, probably like taken away based on like the place that I was at. And then moving here, coming here, going to my, like, my whole journey, it was something that was always like in the back burner, but I didn't know how it could work or how like get involved by being an immigrant. So finally, when I became a citizen, I was like, okay, I can vote. That was like my business. I finally can vote. I can start exercising like something that I love, that is being able to vote and be able to participate in government. And then truly has been like a journey of, I was not expecting to run for city council, but someone brought it up and talking with my husband, he was like, I think you should run. He was like, you'll be great for it. And I was like, should I? Should I? Like truly? And then I did my research, learn about, um, what city council is, what they're, what they do for the city. And at first I was like, no, why would I do that? But then learning more, seeing like where the city is heading, seeing like the opportunities. I was like, you know what, instead of like sitting in the side and just complain or wanting to do more or wanting to get involved, like I'm going to take action. That's the reason why I'm running for city council is because it has been a passion, is something that I feel like I'm capable of. And timing wise, you know, I have two little kids. I oversee a business. Life is crazy, but it's the same as like when you're pregnant, like you're like, is it the right time to have kids? It's never going to be a right time. It's just the moment that you decide to do it. And if like right now I have the passion, I have the courage, I have the motivation to do it. And I feel like that makes the right time for it.
Yeah, that is so true. There's, it's hard to really pin down the right time for, for much of anything these days. Okay, so how have those experiences, right, in immigrating from Colombia? And then your, your life in California compared to Ohio? How has all of that shaped your perspective on leadership and community inclusion?
You know, it's, it is funny because I moved to California 2015. I think 2015, we were starting like a crazy political environment in the United States. And I was just getting like my perspective from being an immigrant and from being an outsider and what was put in the news and everything else. I moved to California because I was going to ministry school, Bible school. I don't do anything with my ministry degree or my Bible degree, nothing. But that's why transition to California was to go to that school in a specific. I never in a lifetime imagined I was going to end up living in the United States. Truly, my plan was to go to a school and then go back to Colombia, do life in Colombia. But God, life had other plans. And that's, so that's how the whole thing started. So again, someone that has always been passionate with government and politics, seeing what was happening in 2016, I was like, what is going on in here? And because it was also super different to what I'm, like, what in Colombia.
Sure.
So learning and actually listening and actually doing research is what, I was like, you know what, I'm seeing that a lot of the things that I'm hearing from people that I'm seeing from the news is not the reality of what actually is happening. And that's when it starts shaping my perspective and views in leadership and everything else. Again, I became a city, I became a resident and a citizen, citizen all in between 2016. Now wait, when did I got married? I think I got married in 2017.
I do the same.
Everything was like between 2017, 2021, 2021 is when I became a citizen. So everything was really fast. Um, I became a citizen in the three years, four-year mark of being in the United States. So I have not complained with my process. I don't, I cannot say that it was a hard process. I was really informed. Thankfully, I was able to, you know, I have the language. I had the resource to be able to have like a lawyer helping me out with immigration. So I have zero complaints on my process, but it has been like a way that has shaped who I am, the way I see things. And just coming from Colombia to like, when you come from a different country that you were born, raised, that, that's what you know. And then being able to bring it here and see here and how to assimilate with things here is what I feel like has shaped me into who I am and into how my belief system is here, how I see things here. Has been a full combination of my background, back home, the process, and just being curious, learning and not staying so much in what is fixed and they want to show you, but actually doing research, actually like going deep, actually like wanting to know more and hear like all the sides. Like for me, that's something that is important is to be able to see every single side and just make an informed decision from those sides.
Yeah, yeah. Do you have an example in mind?
I can give you like the really polarizing example. Again, 2016. I remember it was, I think it was Bernie Sanders, he was still doing like his, um, he was still doing his campaign for president. And Trump, Donald Trump was also like in his campaign train. And you know, the first thing that I was hearing is like, you're Colombian, Trump hates you. He's against immigrants and all these things. And that was my perspective. So I was like, why would anybody want someone that is a racist, someone that doesn't like who I am, just because of the country that I come? But then I stopped looking at the little clips that social media was putting out and actually seeing who he was. And I was like, you know what, he's not as bad as person as people is pointing at him to be. He doesn't hate me. He doesn't hate that I'm an immigrant. Is, this is not the reality that we're living. And then I was like, he's also married to someone that is not from this country. It's like, how is he going to hate immigrants when his own wife is not from here and has the whole process? So that will be like one of those examples where I'm like, what my idea was at the beginning is not what actually transcended or is, or was the reality at that time. The same with like, you know, like people is like, oh, migrating is so hard, like getting your residency is so hard, getting your citizen. It is not when you follow the appropriate protocol, when you follow the rules, when you go through the steps that the government and the system have implied, it's not that hard. Again, I got my residency with, um, six months of applying. I was able to get my, because you get, when you get your first residency, you get a two-year condition. Basically saying that if, in the first two years of you living in the United States, if you break the rules, if anything happens, they can remove your residency from you. They can decide not to give it back to you and they can say like, you need to go back to your country. That's, and I feel like that's a misunderstanding that people have with getting like the green card. It's not like just because you are, you are a green card holder, it means that you can stay in the country indefinitely and you're fine. So then I removed my conditions from my green card. And again, it was a really, just some forms, sending some paperwork, showing and proving that I've been following the rules, that I've been paying my taxes, that I've been following what I'm supposed to follow. And then I got my 10-year green card. For 10 years, you're fine. But then when you get married, when you're, when it's true marriage that you do the transition, I think, again, my numbers are probably like all crazy right now, but after three years of marriage, you can apply for a citizenship. If you get divorced, then you have to wait for five years. But I was, I'm still married.
Yeah.
So right at the three-year mark, I was like, okay, I want to become a citizen. I want to be able to be 100% part of this country. I want to be able to hold every single right that I can hold by being here. So I applied for my citizenship. And the process again was some paperwork. That one was a little bit longer. It makes sense. They have two more background checks and all this stuff. But then I had my interview, my exam. And I think it was like probably like six months after that, that I finally had my ceremony and I think it was a citizen. So yeah, no, it's been, it's been a great experience. And immigration is something that I care for and I love so much and because it's my story, it's who I am. And it's something that I do love informing people about. I feel like there is a lot of misconceptions and wrong ideas out there. So it's something that I am passionate about talking and informing people. And I get it, like my way of doing it is different than other people because mine was through marriage. But I know the other ways. I know when it's like by asylum, I know when it's by, when you have to just migrate because of terrorist attacks or allegations in your country. So I know a little bit about like the topic that makes me extremely passionate about.
Yeah, for sure. That's certainly something we could talk about all day and, um, we only have an hour, unfortunately. But, um, two things that you said, one is, um, how would you recommend somebody who wants to move and immigrate to the United States from another country? How would you recommend that they, uh, understand the system if they don't have those resources like you did? Whether it's, it's money alone or an attorney or any other resource?
Yeah, well, I think that nowadays we have something that is amazing and is the internet. And truly, everything is on their, their website, but it's the immigration website. Everything is right there and they have it in every single language you can imagine. And all the information, and they have it divided between like different, like specifics. It's like you're immigrant because of marriage or because you're a student or because you need asylum or because you have received threat, like a threat will be asylum. Or because your country, there is countries that are considered kind of like countries where people is not safe to live. Those countries immediately can apply for it. Everything is online. So that for me is like the first resource. It's also like talking with people that you might know that have done it. The United States has an embassy in every, like pretty much in every big country, city. And they're always open to talk to you. You, I have, I have spent a lot of time in the embassy in Columbia, like in the United States embassy when I was in Colombia. So they will always want to give you resources and inform you. I just think that we need to understand that, like any other country, and this is the part that I always say is like, every country in the world has rules. And every country in the world even have a strict, even stricter rules than the United States for immigration. So you just have to do your research and know that if you want to do a process and you want to be okay and you want to be able to stay, you have to follow the rules and you cannot break the rules. That should be with everything, you know, it's like you cannot pretend like you can go on live just breaking rules and people is going to be fine with you. So that will be like one of them. I always said like, there is always someone that has done it that you might know. There is always like that connection that there is like six people in between you and someone else. So I'm pretty sure there is people that you can connect with. And again, internet is such an amazing thing that you can just go on research and you will get all the information you need.
So for somebody who is seeking asylum or doesn't have a lot of financial resources, if they show up at the border and they don't have the proper, um, resources or paperwork, whatever it may be, what happens?
So I know there is a lot of new rules that are coming with the new administration. So when you come for asylum, you need to, asylum normally is going to be coming through the country that you're living. So most likely, if you can prove that you're coming from that country and that your life has been at risk and that you need that asylum, then you enter into this process of calling, it's been called an alien. It's such a terrible thing, but basically it's like you're an alien. So there is like those resource, like you can come to a border, they're going to like talk to you and take you the process, but there is a process before you can come in with this administration in a specific. I haven't looked at the new regulations that they are in place for those. But again, asylum, ISO is one of those that is really, they just put you like, that you need to prove that you need asylum. And you don't need to have the resources because most likely when you're coming for asylum, you don't have money. You're leaving a place that you cannot, like you're saying, I cannot continue being there. I cannot take my, my things, my house, my businesses. I need to leave it all behind. So it's already understand that when you're coming for asylum, there is not going to be financial resources. But the government works with you in those situations. So there is a way, I would say first of all, again, going to an embassy before you do a move is going to the most important one. Like if you can go to an embassy and be like, hey, I need asylum. And I know this basically because in Colombia, I had friends that were targeted by guerrillas and they had to do asylum in the United States. They had to leave. And by cartels too. So I had some friends that they were targeted by the cartel and they had to like come to the United States and be like, we need to be here for a few years to be able to be safe from what is happening there. So the government is always going to work with you when you are going and again, when you're following the protocols. So if you're, if you're going to just come and cross the border, you're immediately committing a crime. You need to understand that then there is going to be consequences for that. But if you go to a border and you go to one of like the officers and you're like, hey, I need asylum, I need help, what can we do? They're going to work with you. They're going to cooperate with you.
I think one of the, the heavier topics are for those kids who are here. They were born here and may not even be familiar with their circumstances as to how their parents got here. Or maybe they did come legally and then they didn't complete the process or, or, you know, the paperwork expired. What are their options, you know, in that perspective?
So as of right now, I'm not aware of any rules changing with, um, kids born in the United States. I know there have been some talk about it of like maybe changing some of the rules and changing some of like their status. But, um, you know, at 100%, I think that when you, when your parents come to a country and you're born in a country, you have the right to be, you're, you're a rightful citizen. If you were born in a country, you are a rightful citizen. And I think you have your citizen rights. I think again, that's some of like that media misconception that some things that can be said are taken out of context. And I will want to do more research to be able to have a better understanding of what is actually happening right now. For my understanding, there is nothing happening with those kids that were born in the United States because they're citizens. They are 100% American citizens. About their parents, you know, like it's different when you're like five-year-old, like a five-year-old that you cannot do anything when your parents are illegal. But when you are a citizen, like if, like me being a citizen now in the United States, I can request for my parents to become a citizen. I can request for them to be like, these are my parents, they're, I want them to be with me. So there is those processes too. So it's not just so much of like, oh, your parents came, they don't have a status, they need to live and what are you going to do? Or you were born here, but now they're saying that they want to remove your rights. Again, that's something that has been said, but it's not 100% confirmed. I think it's a little bit of that. I'm not a huge fan of social, of media. Legacy media, I'm not a huge fan because they take some words that have been said and they just take them out of context. But for kids that were born here, they're, they're citizens. They have their rights. So I feel like I always have like those rights. When we talk about kids that are brought into this country, because I know that's a big one. The part that I always say, I feel like, this is part of what I love about Americans is that Americans are so welcoming and they want the best. And they have like this heart for like, um, helping and caring. And it's part of what, who, what the United States is about, is caring and wanting to help everybody else. But I have seen it firsthand, and I have seen it firsthand in Colombia, how mothers will sell their kids for money. So when we have like a border and they're saying like separating the kids from their parents, sometimes, majority of times, those kids are not with their actual parents. Those kids have been sold and they're being sex trafficking. And that's where we 100% need to believe that our government is doing the best they can do in, with what they have, with the information that they have. And sometimes I do believe like sometimes when they're coming through a border, separating them and maybe doing a DNA test just to make sure that they are like actually parents. Or, you know, like nowadays, not just blood is your family, but you will have proper documentation to prove that that kid is yours. Doing those things and instead of just letting kids come with people, because I have seen it. I want to have seen it in Colombia happening, how kids get sold for sex trafficking. And that's a part that sometimes I wish people will understand that is not this craziness, this division that they want to push. Sometimes this is what happens in our countries. Like we have cartels, we have guerrillas and kids are the easiest track. Like kids are just easy to, to move. They're easy to put drugs in because nobody's going to questioning a kid. They're easy, like they are a easy target for these organizations. So that's a part that I'm an advocate for is like, just because they're coming through a border and they look like a family, it doesn't mean that is a family. And we need to be careful with those things.
Yeah. So going back to what you said about legacy media and, and social media, it's really tricky regardless of where you get your information these days, right? What you can trust and, and what you rely on to inform your, your opinion and your outlook. When it comes to immigration specifically, I, I think what I'm hearing you say is that, you know, legacy media and, and also on social media, you know, people will promote those, uh, more alarming and traumatizing moments where, you know, people are, are being taken by ICE and taken away from their families, whatever the case may be. But, but if you're saying that information may not be reliable, where can we get reliable information?
So that's a part that nowadays I feel like life is tricky and more now that we have AI. Because now you have AI also creating videos, creating news. The part that I always say is like, you always have to have the benefit of the doubt to everybody. You always have to give the benefit of doubt to everybody. When I see a clip that looks terrorizing and looks like what is happening, or when I hear like clip of someone saying something awful, I always try to go and look the deeper story. Where did the clip came from? Like where was the setting? What are we talking about? What is the background? What was the question that took to that specific commentary? So it's, it's hard. It shouldn't be the way it is. We shouldn't be having to do all this back research. But I think nowadays being informed and doing your own research is the most important part. So it's not so much just being like, oh, I don't trust the media completely, but it's like, okay, they both, they, they put this clip. Where did this clip came from? And what was the question the person was asked? And what is the full sentence the person was saying? Like it's just being able to go backtracking and see like the full story instead of just trusting 10 seconds online. That's how I see it. I feel like I'm pro educating yourself, pro getting yourself like, you have to do research. Sadly, we live in a time where you have to do your own research and it's not easy. It's really hard to find media that is unbiased. So it just takes a little more time. It takes a little more time. But then you will be able to find like different people that you start believing and you start trusting. And you're like, you know what, this person actually does a great, great job of being unbiased. Like one of my favorite ones that I follow is called House and Habit in Instagram. You know, she, she does a great job of being unbiased and putting like the information the way it is. So it's just finding those people and just again, is, is seeing the track record of what they have posed. And when they're okay posting something against one side and against the other side and being like, look, both are wrong. Here is the story. I think that's when you're gonna start believing things.
Yeah, I guess. And in a similar fashion, I think one of the most polarizing individuals in our country is Trump. And so you talked about, you know, you experienced that coming into the country and, and, you know, heard all of these different voices and their perspective and you referenced, you know, getting to know him. How do you, what sources do you trust in, in, um, getting to know Trump or, you know, not just Trump, but any politician?
Yes.
That's, you know, out of reach.
So it is part of like that backtracking and hearing like the full sentence. When I came here, 2016, I was just seeing like the little clips, like the little 10-second clips. And then I was like, what is happening? For me was that, um, I had friends that were like, well, but do you actually saw the whole, the whole story? Do you heard the question that was asked before he said what he said? Here's the thing with Trump is that, um, he sometimes says things that I'm like, why? Maybe we should have thought about it for a little bit before we put it out there. But you know, I'm the same way. Sometimes I say things that I'm like, maybe, maybe I should have thought about it a little bit longer. So I don't know him personally. I cannot speak on this as a person because I don't know him. But it was going back to like, you know, like he had a TV show that I loved watching when I was growing up, like Apprentice. And just, I And just again, it's giving benefit of the doubt to people. And knowing that, you know what? He wasn't a politician. He is not a politician. He is a business owner. He's an entrepreneur. And as a, someone that works in business and is like in a high level in business, the conversations, the way that you do business is different. You're like aggressive, you just go for it. You're like a shark. Um, and sometimes you say things just because you're close in the business. And I think he is still scary, that model. It's not political correct, but I feel like that's what makes him different. So again, it's not so much, I always said it to, and this is with every single person. I don't believe in idolizing people. Just because someone has a title or is in a position of power or you really like them, doesn't mean that you need to idolize them. You should never idolize a human being because they're always going to get, they're always going to at some point let you down. We're still broke, we're all broken. Again, I'm a Christian. I believe that the only person that I should put in a position of idolizing and loving is Jesus. Um, and I shouldn't put anybody else in that position. So I will never, like again, I can be pro someone, but that doesn't mean that I'm going to be like, oh, this is my Lord and Savior. Like never, like that, that's not the place. They're always going to let you down. And more politicians, um, now that I'm like running for city council, I have been able to see a little bit about like what the political word is. And I'm like, what is happening here? What are we doing? So again, it's just, it's going back to that. You have to like give people benefit of the doubt and do research, be able to see the full context. It's always about context and the full context. That's, that's my point across all this is that, you know, just because you see something, doesn't mean that that's, that's it. It's not a definite. Just because there is like a little piece, that doesn't mean that is the way it is. You know, like it's funny now, now that I'm running for city council, now that we're getting closer, I start seeing things about me online. And I'm like, how is people getting this information from? Because that's not who I am or that's not true. Like there is things that I'm like, no. Like we're, we're missing like more, you're missing the context. You're missing like the full, like the full image. You're just seeing like a little, kind of like when you're putting a puzzle together and you're just having like one piece of the puzzle. You're missing like, you need to put the whole puzzle together to be able to actually see a picture. That's, that's how I see these kind of things.
So for, for context, for the listeners, we're recording this on September twelfth. And that, you know, following um, a lot of things happening this week. How do you think that our leaders can work to bring our country together? And I know it's not a quick fix, right? But what would you like to see from them most immediately to start to reduce the violence? And, you know, encourage more working together?
Yeah, this um, well, this is how, it has been a heavy week. Yeah, today is September twelve. Yesterday we had nine eleven. That is, I feel like it's a day that has Marcus Hall. Even in Colombia, it's a date that I remember specifically. I was like in second grade, I think. And I remember when the news broke. Um, and then the day before that, we had the assassination of Charlie Kirk. That is a Christian conservative voice that was creating a movement. And just thinking about it makes me sick because first, like, you know, it's, it's weird. Because coming, coming from Colombia, coming from a country where literally they told me you cannot run because you will get killed. I'm like, that's Colombia. I get it. That, that's where I come from. But that's not the United States. That's not the United States that I, I love. That's not the country that I came to. That's not what we stand for. And it's sad that we cannot have different opinions because it takes us to these things. Again, we can all agree to disagree. And it's that part that is like, we need to be okay with agree to disagree. And what you're doing, I think is like, is one of those things that I'm like, this is what we need to do. It's like, I know because I have heard your podcast, I know that you're a liberal mom. Like, I know that your views and my views are opposite. But look at us, we're sitting down here and having a conversation. And I might not change the way you see certain things. You might not change the way I see, see certain things because we have values, we have opinions, we have things that have shaped us to be who we are, but we're open to have a conversation. And I think that's what we need to go back to, is that we can agree to disagree. Just because we see things different, doesn't mean that I need to be silent. It doesn't mean that you need to be silent. Um, and I think it's time for like our politicians to step up and say enough is enough. Enough is enough. This commentary, this hatred is, is enough. We cannot continue with this. Again, media, like seeing the news and like some of the headlines, I was like, how can you go to bed at night knowing that you put that out there? It's life, it's a human being.
I think part of that too is a lot of these politicians speak to the media knowing that it's going to enrage some people, right? Because they want their, they want people's eyeballs and they want them to draw their attention, right? And so I think uh, it's a double edged sword in that way too. And, and to your point, yeah, it's about time that our politicians and our leaders um, try to come together at the national stage and not just, not just, you know, moms from Westerville, Ohio.
It's time for people to like, I feel like it's time for people to like stop. We need to stop. We need to stop this hatred. We need to stop just putting people in boxes. Because that's what it is. It's putting people in boxes. I think we need to stop just labeling people and actually wanting to get to know people, actually hear their heart. And if you're like, you know what? I heard you. I still don't like you. Walk away. Walk away. You don't have to, you don't have to like me. We're not little gold coins for everybody, want to be our friends and want to be in our life and want to be involved with us. And it's okay. That's okay. And we need to have respect for that. Respect for the life. I cannot believe we're in a point that we have lost respect for life. That's the part that I'm like, I'm sick to my stomach just thinking about it. Again, I didn't know, I didn't know Charlie Kirk as, as a person. I met him two weeks ago at an event. I heard him talk. I do know a lot of his friends. I know a lot of people that is close to him. I do know people that care for him. And I also just seen the pain that is coming out of this is like awakening call for all of us. I think it's awakening call for all of us, no matter what side of the aisle we are.
Do you think it could be awakening call for gun control?
So I have a lot of opinions on gun controls.
Okay, okay, sure.
Here's the thing, do I believe that we need to do something? Yes. But I will tell you, I stand, I stand on our second amendment. And the reason I stand in our second amendment is because when you take guns away from citizens, the government takes control and that's how socialism and communism enters into a country. When you take away from the citizens, the right to be able to stand to create like a civil war, create like a, a movement to stand when political wise things are going crazy or you have a dictatorship, that's how dictatorships start. When the citizens don't have a right to be able to stand up against those things because you have stripped them out of them. So I'm pro second amendment because again, I have seen it. Not in Colombia, but I have seen it in Venezuela. That's how things in Venezuela happen first, is they remove the guns from their citizens. So um, I'm pro second amendment, but I do believe that we need to have better controls on who is purchasing guns, how are we doing it, like tracking this thing. And to that point, it comes an open border. Because people believe that only people come through those borders, but when you have an open border, you have illegal arms crossing too. It's like, oh, you guys want to have control in the government level, but then we want to just let things come through a border. And one of those things are guns. And there are the unregistered guns, there are the ones that we cannot track down. There are the ones that were purchased probably illegally. And that's where I think, that you see, does, is not an easy fix. And it's not, it's not something that we can just, I wish we could just grab like a little magic wand and be like, let's fix it all. But it's not, and that's a whole point where I'm like, you have to go down the bottom and I start fixing one line, fixing the next one, fix, like it's a little like creating like a wall. And there's a horrible difference creating a wall. It's like creating a brick when you're building a house. You're putting one brick down, you're putting the next brick down. You're just putting one brick, one brick, one brick and creating something that at the end of the day is going to give you protection. So that's where, yes, I think we should do something better for guns and gun control. But I do a stand in our second amendment of being able to wear guns.
And to your point, I, I agree in that we always need to reserve our right to speak up for ourselves, whether that's to the government or, you know, whomever is, is the authority figure. But I, I can't imagine that you would, you know, be supportive of, of violence in that way, right? And we don't have citizens rising up against our, our government. And so how do you weigh that with the tragedies that we see? Because these guns are out there, right? The kids and the mass shootings or on off shootings, right? How do you weigh those two conflicting ideologies?
It i- it is hard because yeah, that's when, you know, when I'm talking out like, oh, we can rise against our government. I'm not talking out what is happening right now. I'm talking out like extreme situations where you have the government using their resources, so their military. Um, in a way that is abusive, is when we're crossing the line, was, there is a cross of lines. Uh, when there is a dictatorship, when there is like a big moment. And I know some people is going to be like, well, we have a dictatorship. Disagree in, in those ways still. Um, a dictatorship is when someone decides to stay in power even though they were taken out of the powers. Just saying that, putting that out there, disagree to the whole commentary of, of that side. But um, you know what? It is hard. Um, I do have, based on things that are happening, the last couple of shootings that we have had, the last couple of mass shootings. Even like the last assassination attempts that we have had and the assassination attempt that we had. This is going to extreme polarization, but I think it's coming from mostly one specific side. And, and that's the part that I'm like, we cannot continue with this. We need to stop this hatred. We need to stop this hatred because when you, the last couple of mass shooting in the schools have been Christian schools or conservative schools. The assassination attempt against Trump, that is a conservative. The assassination, the assassination of Charlie Kirk, that is a Christian, is a conservative. It's, it's hard. And I'm not saying that is one side only. I think both sides are, both sides need to have something and they need to have control. But rather than I don't have, I don't have a solution right now. It's all so new. Also just happening and evolving. And again, I come from a country where tho- these things happen. So I have my perspectives from that, but this is so new for the United States. I know that mass shootings are not new. I have heard about them in the schools. So I know that's not new. But this new movement of shootings that we're seeing, I think they're new. Um, so as of right now, I don't have grounds to speak on it. And I don't have the knowledge and I'm someone that likes to have knowledge. I'm, I'm someone that likes to have facts. Um, I don't like to say things just to say them. So I don't want to speak and just say like, oh, this is the way we fix it, when in reality I haven't done my research, you know?
Yeah, and that's fair. So my initial idea in this podcast was a conversation like this, right? Which is why I'm really engaging and I do want to get back to our, our local elections here. Um, uh, most definitely. And I, um, before we move on, would just say that I, I agree with you in that we need to look beyond just the headlines and this political rhetoric. And I think what is most uh, shocking and, you know, could be the right word of, of this week and, and what happened to Charlie Kirk is he, yes, is, is very well known and, and is this activist, but he's not a politician, right? He's not sitting in, in a seat in that way. Um, but I, but I do want to recognize that we lost those politicians uh, in, in Minnesota, right? And so it's definitely not just one sided. It is eh, the country, right? This, this, this heat, right? And so definitely something that we will not fix today. So let's get back to, to Westerville. Your, your priorities, how we can, right? As individual citizens in, in our community, make a difference here um, in Westerville. So your priorities include safe neighborhoods, affordability and people first. So let's talk a little bit about some specific policies and initiatives that you would propose to, to advance those. What, let's start on safe neighborhoods. I feel like that's a good segue. So what, how, uh, you know, what do you want to address? What do you think needs, needs to be done to protect?
Yes.
Ours, our neighborhood.
So I will say, I, this is one of the reasons that I love Westerville is that I feel like it's extreme safe neighborhood. I li- I know my street. Um, we have like the police watch and all these different things. And I think Westerville does a really good job with safety. I don't feel unsafe in Westerville whatsoever. And when I'm saying like safety, I'm just talking about being able to keep that. I want to make sure that our first responders are funded and taking care of the way they need to be. So they can always continue doing their job the way that they are doing it right now. I want to make sure that we have the amount of police that we need to have, that they have the resources that they need, that they have the funding that they need, that they're taking care beyond the time of serving. Because we need to make sure that after years of serving, their pensions are there and they can continue having and afford in their life after they put their life in risk for us. So when I say safety, it's just making sure that our first responders are taken care of. They have the tools that they need and they have the funding that they need. And that's what that safety means, is making sure that we keep what we have going on. So that's my whole platform with safety. You know, at the same time that I believe like, this whole thing, I believe that we need to empower our police, we need to empower our men that are, men and women that are in that line of duty and service to be able to what they, what they do best, what they have been trained to. You know, it's like, I don't want to be the one fighting someone in the streets because they're like trying to rob me. I want to be able to call the police and have them come and taking care of. So that's what I want, is want to make sure that those things stay in place. That when you call the police, they respond and is in seconds and not like forty five minutes later. Or like an ambulance, you heard some, in some places that ambulance time is insane. I want to make sure that that never happens in Westerville. That if you have an ambulance in your house, the ambulance is going to there in, in minutes. Um, the firefighters, that, that's what safety means for me. It, it means that we're keeping Westerville the way that we have it. Is there was a real that I truly just tell my kids, go and ride your bikes. And they just go out and ride their bikes and I know they're taken care of.
Yeah.
So that's safety for me. I know they have, and I have posted on my social media and I have talked about it. Making Westerville a sanctuary city and why I oppose that is because it's breaking against that safety. It's breaking against what is keeping us safe. So that's what that platform on safety is.
See, I see. Yeah, I think in, um, from my perspective, I see a lot of consensus and that, right? Everybody wants Westerville to remain safe. And um, from uh, from city council, um, I understand that their budgets are always fully funded, which is great, right? So I think there's consensus there too, and that's something that we want to continue to prioritize. And hopefully everyone has, has that in mind. Um, okay, so then we have um, affordability. So this is obviously another really big topic that we could talk about all day on. Um, but if you have identified specific areas of the city's budget, um, you know, what are, are, are we spending money somewhere where we, you don't think we should be, things like that? What could we specifically look at to help our citizens in, in Westerville?
Yes, so with affordability, um, you know, as a working mom, as a parent that both parents work. Um, and the cost of living, I, I feel like the cost of living is just increasing no matter what. Our grocery is still going up. Um, housing is impossible to like afford nowadays. So when I'm talking about affordability, I want to make sure first that our citizens, the ones that are here already. So the people in Westerville can stay in Westerville. Because going door knocking and talking with people, a lot of seniors are like, we cannot continue affording this. And that breaks my heart because I'm like, this is their home. So when I talk about affordability, I want to make sure seniors can stay in their home. They can stay here where they chose to raise their family. They can stay here where they chose to raise their family, where they chose to live their life. I want to make sure they can stay. I want to make sure that as as like young families with kids, we can continue for in our life here. We cannot continue for in like afford the house and like the place that we chose for our kids. Because I'm pretty sure we all chose this community because it has to offer all the beautiful things that they have to offer. I want to make sure that young families can stay, uh that they don't feel like they're being pushed out or that they are like being, like they cannot continue for in it. And then I want to make sure that young people can come and make Westerville their home. So it is a lot. And I'm not going to make the promise that I'm going to fix it in one or two years. Because I know there is a lot of like little domino pieces that come together with this specific topic. But I think Westerville has done great. We have great AAA bindings, what is amazing for our utilities. I do know there is a few things that are going to be happening the next year with electricity and all our stuff that, before I say more, I want to like again, I want to have all the knowledge on it. But I know there is a few things that are going to be happening that can affect our bills. So I want, like, those are the things that I want to be able to look at that. So our property taxes, so I'm pretty sure our property taxes are fund firefighters. And then the rest is more for like schools. Our income taxes is the one that pays for our police and our bills. So, and this is the part that is hard because I know how a lot of people feel about Westerville growing and bringing businesses in. But it's understanding that we do need to bring those businesses because that's how the city grows and that's how we can afford the things that we need to afford. And I think that's the part that we need to look the city as a whole and be like, okay, we have developed this amount of housing, this amount of businesses. How can we like work together? But knowing that we can need to continue to develop businesses because that income tax that they pay is what is paying for our city and is what can help us bring those budgets down for the citizens. And then this is all public knowledge, you can ask for it. I have seen a few numbers of money that has been used in ways that I'm like, why are we using it for that specific things? And I don't want to put it out here until like, again, I think it's like something that people need to research. Because I feel like that money should be used for all citizens and not so much for particular groups of men. Because it is, it's for the citizens, it's to make the city good for all of us. So overall, I think Westerville has done a great job with how they use their money. Like and the city city hall project is being done without any debt. So I do appreciate that. I think they're doing a great job. I just think we need to like, being in city, like that's the reason I'm running is to make sure that the things that we're doing great is stay great. And if there is anything that is trying to come and like trying to change things, make sure that we're doing it for the whole and not so much for a group or individuals. But it's for the benefit of all of us as people from Westernville.
Which is a great, great lead into, you know, what does people first mean to you? And what does it mean in practice? You know, as as we have so much diversity and and different thought in Westerville?
What I mean people first is that, so city council is supposed to be nonpartisan. And maybe nonpartisan is supposed to be nonpartisan race. That has been broken for the last few years. So now you see more of like endorsement from parties. You will see in my social media that I did got endorsement from the young Republicans. So what I'm saying with people first is that I do have a belief system. And I feel like majority of people have a belief system. You can be Democrat, you can be Republican, or you can be in the middle, but you're going to have a leaning. So when I'm saying people first is that, yes, I can have my values, I can have my views, but I'm not bringing those to city council. That's not, I'm not bringing my political views into city council because city council is supposed to be nonparisan. So in a raceways, I do have those values. But when I get into city council, it's going to be about what is good for the people of Westerville. And that includes everybody in the aisle. That includes if you're liberal, Republican, in the middle. If you want to be a potato today, you can be a potato and I'm going to work for you. That's what I'm saying, it's like, I'm not going to come with my ideology, with my political views and create whatever I want. Is I want to make sure that I'm hearing you out and I'm having conversations with people and I'm putting everybody in that position. Because I'm not running for city council for myself. I'm not doing this for me. I'm doing this for my kids, I'm doing this for the citizens, I'm doing this for the seniors that I have talked with. I'm doing this for my neighbors, I'm doing this for everybody else. Like I'm not, I'm not going to gain, there is not anything that I want to gain out of this. It's just, there is this passion in me that occurs for people and that's what I want to do and that's what I want to bring out. So when I say people first is that, is that I want to have transparency, I want to have conversations. I want to be the council that if you want to go and have coffee and scream at me because you're extremely mad at what is happening, I'm there for you and I'm going to hear you out. Because that's who I am. And is that I'm not going to come with an agenda, nor a political agenda. Because I don't believe that's what we should be doing in council. Is is doing what is for the people, not for all.
So you emphasize on your website, I think I saw this, where Westerville, to what you just said, Westerville should be welcoming for everyone. Um, and you mentioned that some people feel ignored.
Yeah.
What concerns do those community members share that you're aware of, right? Or in what barriers do they have to engaging with our leaders to express those concerns?
So a lot of the, like, a lot of the concerns that you hear is the same concerns I have heard in the podcast. Is housing, is uh roads, traffic. Those are like the big ones that you hear people talking about, uh that I'm I'm pretty sure council is aware of. And I know because I have talked with council leadership, that they are working on addressing most of them. They they are creating things like for traffic. I know that some of the work that they're doing in Africa Road is to alleviate traffic. They're working on housing and how to be able to create more housing in Westerville and there are projects that they're working on. So those things, I feel like they're being heard and they're being like touching. But there is like a big silent majority, like there is a big silent group that is concerned about, you know, like there was this movement of wanting to remove the invocation from city council meetings. That is ninety second prayer open to all of it. There is a group that is just pushing really hard for it and being loud about it. And then you have like, is that what the majority of people actually want? Is that, is that the representation or is that their presentation only because they're being loud? And they're being pushed by someone else? That's what I'm saying, that's that that line specifically talks to that. It's like, are we just listening to a group that is just being loud? Or are we actually listening to everybody that belongs in this city? And, you know, like, I believe Westerville is extremely welcoming. I'm a Latina, I'm from Colombia, I have an accent. And I feel, well, when I go walking downtown, like when I go walking uptown, when I go places, I feel welcome, I feel loved. And that's what I want for everybody. I want you to be able to walk down and feel like nobody is looking at you different, just because you look different. That for me is what being diverse and that's what welcoming means. It doesn't mean that we need to push just one agenda because it's the agenda you want to push. It doesn't mean that we need to change everything in the city laws and regulations because that's that's not what it is. Ideally, is making sure that people is, when you have people that actually shows love and care. And it's created, again, it's going back to that topic of like, we need to stop creating this division. We need to stop creating this hatred that we're creating because of laws that just represent a part of the population. And it's like, if, as a council, I can show my love and care for absolutely everybody, I feel like I'm doing the job of being someone in a leadership position to reflect what the city should be. And be an example for everybody else. That's where that comes from.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, I think this is our last policy question. Thank you for staying on, I'm taking up more time. So you've expressed concerns about the proposed school district earned income tax issue. Can you tell us a little bit more about about those concerns?
So, yes. And, you know, that my stand on it is as a citizen. I'm running for city council. I don't have all the information with the school board. I don't know exactly how the school board works, I don't know how the school district works. So I'm just talking as a citizen that I'm concerned of like an income tax putting into us. Because again, when I'm saying that, one of my biggest priorities is affordability. And we're talking about a zero point seventy five percent incre- increase in our income tax. That for what I mentioned you first, um, when we're talking about like affordability. Our income tax normally is to take care of the police and the city bills. Now the school trying to come and take part of it, I'm like, we're crossing like, because property taxes is what's supposed to go to school. That's that's the reason I'm against, I'm against it as a citizen in Westerville. Because I do have my concerns of what is happening in the school district. For what I have seen, the numbers are going down, but we need more money. That's the kind of things that I'm like, what are we doing? What's happening? And um, I wish I could talk more about it, but again, I don't have all the, I don't have all the facts. I just have the little facts that I'm seeing. I'm just speaking as a citizen. I have posted as someone that is running for city council because I think it's important to inform people and make people want to get informed. But I think it's something that everybody should go and look into it and decide for themselves, is that what they care? But based on like what I have seen in numbers of enrollment number on how budget is going, I have concerns. It's just, it's concerns.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I think that's how we hold people accountable, right? Is asking questions and doing our research and making sure that things are the way that they can and should be the best that they can and they should be. And to connect the dots with our earlier conversation, I think Westerville is a unique district. You know, often we're compared to suburbs like Dublin and Oland Tangi. And, you know, those that share a lot of our our values and goals to be the best in our schools. But we also have a significant community of families in need, right? So we have, I think it's forty three percent who are economically disadvantaged. And when we get back to affordability, I think the schools play a part in that, right? There are so many resources that they provide to those students who have those basic needs. And it's an avenue for for community members to support those families as well. And so for me, it is so important that we support our kids, right? Who need those resources and our communities so that they can be productive citizens. And they're not, they don't have these barriers of whether they ate breakfast or, you know, if they can learn the language, right? That's obviously a big one. And so Westerville does a really great job of providing those resources. And I would just encourage everyone to reach out to the district with any specific concerns. You know, I sat down with with Angie Hamburg a few weeks ago and that podcast is out. And she talks a lot about enrollment and and all of those questions, so I won't get into that today. But what I I would reiterate is that the earned income tax is is just that it's on earned income, right? And so in that way, it likely won't impact our seniors who have retired and are not working, which is, you know, one way to keep it more affordable for them. How would you propose that our kids remain a priority while also balancing that family affordability?
So that's a great question. It's a great question because, you know, and I mentioned it, one of the reasons I'm running is for my kids. And it's, I want to make sure that my kids have, as a mom, and I feel like I'm going to speak for moms. I hope that's how moms feel. But as a mom, I strive to make sure that my kids have everything that they can have and make sure that they're like growing in a loving family, growing in a, in a home where they get everything that they need and that they can go out and be amazing citizens, where they're going to show that love and they're going to show that compassion. I want my kids to, they can be whoever they want to be and I want to be able to give them those resources as much as I can. And I know that I'm in a privileged situation where I can afford those things, even though, you know, to the day, what we're saying to a day today, I'm like, how am I going to continue affording life when both of my husband have really good jobs? And we're feeling like the pressure of it. I cannot imagine how people in less disadvantaged situations feel in this. So I feel like kids should always be a priority because they're also the future. They are going to be our next leaders. The kids that we're raising today are the ones that are going to hopefully want to take care of us when we're seniors. And I probably want to be in my position and make sure that I can afford my house. So I do believe that taking care of our kids is extremely important. Giving them an education is, having kids that are educated and have everything that they need is is crucial. I have heard that Westerville is like one of those pockets that is extremely, we are for like a school district because we do have a lot of like Columbus that comes into it. So I think is, we need to have more conversations, we need to learn more about it. We need to see how we can create an impact. And what are the things that we can go, because I feel like it's to a point that maybe we should like go to a city of Columbus and be like, we need help here.
Yeah, that's a tricky one. The the Columbus kids that we've had, the students, the the district, I should say, not the students. We've always had them, right, for over a hundred years. And so that is certainly a conversation that could be had, but it's not a a quick fix in in this year. And I think what I'm getting at is, you know, how, I think it's important to hold our leaders accountable, right? And both our city and both our schools. I just, what worries me is I don't want to try to hold them accountable in a way that negatively impacts our kids, right? I don't think that we should withhold these funds that that are needed. And we know that they're needed based on like anybody, you can look in the budget, it's very, it's very complicated, right? And so you can, you can talk to our leaders and you can ask those specific questions. But regardless of those details, less money, right? Voting down the earned income tax is less money for our students. And so I just think it's a really important question. And and obviously you're in a unique position where where you're running for city council and then also a mom. And so I know that that's a lot of different perspectives to balance. It's just, you know, what what would you say to those students who will lose resources if if it doesn't pass?
So that's the part that I'm, I feel like the system is broken. To be honest, I just feel like the school system is broken, not only in Westerville, but I think the school system is broken in the United States. The way that I see it and I see it as a business is that you will not throw money to a system that is broken just to fix or put a Band-Aid on it. It's that you actually need to go to a core of what's happening and what is creating the issue. So I, so that's where, that's mostly where I stand on, is that I will not throw money into, to put a Band-Aid on things just to fix it slowly, I think is because the Band-Aid is going to fall down and we're going to need another Band-Aid and we're going to need another one. And then we're going to have more money and more money and where where does it end? That's mostly where I'm coming, it's like, we need to actually strip down the system and go from like the bottom and fix what is broken to be able to create this, create a solution that is sustainable through the years. And that's one of the reasons I'm not running for a school board because it sounds extremely difficult. And I know there is a lot of talk, I know there is a lot of like, and it hurts me knowing that kids can be affected with all this. But it's that part of me that I don't believe, I have a, we didn't talk about this, but my background when I got canceled on not being able to do political science is business and finances. So I also see it as in that regard, it's like, I will not put money into something that is broken just to put like a little Band-Aid for fixing it. So that's where I come from that. I do care for the, and I have said it, I do care for the kids, I care for the students because again, I do believe that they are the future of this country. But we need to be able to fix from the root and not just put Band-Aids on them. So I know it's a tricky conversation, I know there is so much that goes into it. And it will be like a whole conversation, we will be, it's for like another hour. And it will be like a whole conversa- it will be, it's for like another hour. But yeah, that's, that's where, that's my stand is like, I just want to be able to see solutions from the bottom, from the root. Being able to be like, okay, this is the root cause, this is what is creating this issue. And this is how we can fix that issue. If you come to me and you tell me like, look, this is the issue, this is what, this is the root cause. And this is our plan to fix in it, but while we fix this with the plan that we are implementing, we need money for a couple of, maybe two years, I'll be more op- open to that. When we have an income tax that is, income tax that is not going to drop unless that is overruled. And like, you just want us to put money, money, money every single year, not stop. That's the, that's, that's it. I'm sure the root cause is taken care of.
Yeah, and to your point, I agree that the, you know, so many systems are broken. But, but right now that fight is at the state house and it, it's the Republican-led state house that is reducing funding for our schools, right? And so that's why our district is having to go to the community to ask for more money. And so I absolutely agree, it is, there's, there's a big fight there that we need to tackle and we need to find solutions. In the meantime, my ask of you, just mom to mom, is, is to recognize that a failed levy will most, most definitely impact our kids or in our school im- immediately, right? And so, um, you know, that's the question we need to be asking ourselves is, is what's it worth to you? Okay, let's move on. And I know I want to be, I want to be wary of time here. So I, there are a couple of questions, is there one that you particularly want to speak to before we wrap it up? Or I would probably go with, how would you measure your success if you win a seat on city council?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a great one to close. I know there were so many questions and I will be happy. I know we talked about a lot of different things and we went more like federal and state in some of the questions. I would love to come again and we can go more in depth in those things.
That'd be great.
If you ever want to go more in depth, because I know you want like someone that is a conservative here. So I will happily, just let me know, I will happily come and talk with you on any other topic that you want to talk. But how will I measure success, um, in city council? I think the way that I will measure it is if the seniors can stay, is our families can afford living here. And I'm seeing new young people coming and making Westerville a home. If I can see our citizens living their best life, staying safe, feeling that they're in the best city. Seeing businesses thrive from small to big, I just want to see them thrive. See that they're like in the city that they want and want to come more. That's how I'll measure success, is when those things are, are happening, that I know that are happening now and I just making sure that they stay that way. I'm not measuring success for me because again, I'm not running to make, I'm not running to make anything out of me. I'm, I'm running because I care for the city, I care for the community, I care for the people. So success will be seeing everybody in the community thriving. That's, that's how I'll measure success.
That's great. Where can we find you out and about as you're campaigning?
So I work from home a lot of days, so normally I'm in uptown. So you will see me a lot in uptown, just walking around, probably sitting like express or, or beginning. I bang, I'm in, I bang a lot too. You might always see me there, those are places that you can see me. If you want, if anybody wants to grab a cup of coffee and have a conversation with me, I'm always open for it. You can just send me an email and my email is in my website. It is Daniela Beckett, maybe you can put it in the comments with the spelling.
I will for sure.
But it's Daniela Beckett for Westerville at Gmail. People can send me emails and I will one hundred percent make time to get coffee, lunch, whatever they want to get. And I will talk with anybody. That's part of my platform is that I'm here for absolutely everybody, so I will talk with absolutely everybody. Around the city, you will see me walking. Sometimes you will see me running behind my kids and screaming at them that they need to listen to me or something like that. I try to go to a lot of like the events that the city put together, so I'm going to be there on the Fourth Fridays, walking, sometimes I'm in a booth. Sometimes I'm like just sitting, hanging out. But yeah, email me if you want to get to, like, if you want one-on-one, email will be the best way. If you want to hear more about like my platform, the campaign, the website is a great place, but also Facebook. I'm pretty sure it's Daniela Beckett for city council.
I'll include that too.
I should remember these things, I don't like platforms. But, um, on Facebook, I do post a lot more and I try to keep more updated. And I'm doing like video series of like issues, topics. Uh, sometimes I just post a little bit of like what is happening. So even if you don't agree with me and disagree with me and you just want to keep up with what I'm saying, Facebook will be the place to see those things. But yeah, I'm here. I'm always open, I'm always available, I will always make time for anybody, so I can be right here.
Wonderful, well, thank you so much Danielle for your time today and for the conversation. Just for the listener's perspective, this is not where we had intended to take a lot of the conversation. So I appreciate your time and your just willingness to engage in that. But thank you also for, you know, wanting to be a leader for our community and I look forward to seeing you around town.
Thank you so much, thank you for putting this together, I really appreciate it. And I think, I really think it's amazing what you're doing and this is what we need. Truly, this is what we need, it's just respectful dialogue and hearing each other, so thank you so much.